Board of County Commissioners now in session. We'll begin with prayer followed by the pledge. Commissioner Jones, if you'd lead us in prayer, please.
Heavenly Father, we come to you this morning in the name of Jesus, asking you to be with us today in our decision-making process, our thought process as God, not just for today, not just for what's going on now, but for every day you're gonna give us as residents and citizens of Franklin County. We thank you, Lord, for wisdom and knowledge that you promised not to withhold from us today. Therefore, I ask of you, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda will be approval of minutes.
Stay moved.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Massie, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next will be payment of county bills.
So moved.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley, second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries also. Next will be Department Director's report. Mr. Howard Neighbors, Superintendent of Public Works.
Good morning, Commissioners, how y'all doing?
Good.
I just got one item on what we talked about last time, about the grass cutting. We wanted to just cut the grass like we've been doing it, so I got some complaints in East Point, Appalachia, Carabel, for, you know, wanting the grass cut, so.
Yeah.
I know we usually cut the side roads and stuff, and then we usually, it's fifteen foot, you know, sixty-seven, six-thirty, from the edge of the road down, and we leave the rest, so.
Commissioners, I should have that, for the short week, I didn't have it, but I should have that revised schedule for your approval, and I'll be honest with you, I'm gonna follow the Wacola model as close as possible. And I already talked also to Broad Spectrum, and they said it's a lot easier in their equipment and when they're cutting, if you allow them to do at least two a year of just full cuts, basically.
You're talking about on ninety-eight?
Yes, ma'am, on the state road. And they also want me to address, Mr. Chairman, coming from the county line with Gulf County. They want a full proposal, including one of that section included also. So I'll have that to you guys at your next meeting for your approval. But until then, I guess Howard can continue doing what he's doing until we submit that, if the board has a problem with that.
Please, as a board.
So do we need to make a motion to allow him to continue what he's doing now until we address the issue further?
The revision.
I'll make that motion then.
Second. We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any further discussion?
And that's where we get a lot of complaints from, is Atlanta or in East Point, ninety-eight, that we do four Broad Spectrum, so. I don't know, you know, cutting it twice a year, so.
But they want to cut more?
Well, we usually do it about twice a month, you know, we get two, so. All that stuff grows up, you got your bike path, you got kids, you got people that walk, so.
And I'm sorry, twice a year would be, twice, two full cuts a year, and the rest of it would be just maintenance.
Okay, like we usually do.
That's what they were suggesting.
Okay.
They're suggesting actually the two be in full cuts instead of some kind of partial cut?
Yes, at least two full cuts.
Two full cuts?
Yeah, that's the whole color, that's the change that they made.
Okay.
They should make them all full cuts.
Come on, a while, bro.
They grow them in New York.
We do have a motion and second on the floor. There be no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Anything from the board for Mr. Howard this morning? Any board comment?
I do need to ask a question. Mr. Howard, I think we're still waiting to hear back for sure about the signs for the access alleys?
Yes.
Okay. We're waiting to hear back on that as far as the cost and all that, right?
Yeah, the cost versus other options that we could use.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
We're working on it, we got some stuff up.
Yep, thank you.
Any other comments from the board for Mr. Howard? Keep up the good work, Howard.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda will be Mr. Fonda Davis,道路 director.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Everything's running good. No report this morning.
Anything from the board for Mr. Davis?
Question.
Yes, ma'am.
Are we pursuing any kind of championship games to be played here on any of our sports complex?
We don't have anything at this time, Commissioners. Again, like I mentioned, not last meeting, but one meeting before that, Mr. Farrakhan was one of us to to a whole tournament here, a state tournament, so.
When's that?
Well, we just got to get back in touch with it.
Okay. Well, y'all be sure to do that, because I know some of the Commissioners were able to go to the first day of ball.
Right.
I'm telling you, you could not find a parking place nowhere over in East Point.
That's right.
It was all the way out past the cemetery, all the way out ninety-eight, all the way out past the Baptist church on C.C. Land Road. I could not find a parking place, went by there twice that day.
Right.
So anyway, we're gonna have to deal with that. The other thing is, over at Kendrick Park, there is ninety acres in there, and we're only utilizing a small amount. In the future, it needs to be looked at to see what we need to, can do there to grow the facility.
Okay.
And do it with the FERDAC grant, like we did with the first part of it. And because there's something that you can do between where the baseball fields are or the softball fields are and the walk path to the back of it, there is a good big stretch in there, you could do something in there with it.
Okay.
I just wanna bring that to your attention, that in the future, you all need to look on that, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other comments from Mr. Davis and the board members?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman, if I may. Fonda, what's the name of the gentleman that's over Dixie, you? I'm sorry, I'm blank.
April Redd.
No, the gentleman from Dixie, the guy who lives in Leal, what's his name?
Uh...
I'm just blank, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
And I made you blank too. Anyway, do you know if all the tournaments for this summer have already been set, or if there's still some open? Is that we're waiting to hear back on?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Sorry.
I'm trying to think of that guy's name.
Yeah, I blanked out, I'm sorry.
Come on, he had got...
Because I don't remember either.
He used to do the transmission.
Yeah. Last name Cotts?
Cotts.
Okay.
Yeah, Cotts, that's it. Cost transmission.
Any other comments from the board for Mr. Davis this morning? Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Pam Brunel, Emergency Management Director.
I just got a call from Emergency Management right before the meeting started. They're working on a project, and they needed all hands on board, so they asked if you have any questions, let me know, and I'll forward them to Pam.
She had no action items on the report.
She had no action items, so.
Okay, next will be Mr. Eric Lovestrian, Extension Office Director.
We have one item I guess we need to take care of this morning, and the period for RFQ submissions for the Architectural Engineering and Construction Supervision Services for the Extension Office project has closed, so I think Michael has a couple of those that were submitted, RFQs from architectural firms.
As the board knows, these are, this is for the project to renovate Bobby Howell Building, is what it's referred to down there. They'll be co-locating with DEP, so they'll be sharing office space, and right now, this is the... RFQ? RFQ, Request for Qualifications. We will send it to Review Committee for ranking. It will be made up of one of our staff members, Eric, and probably Jenna from DEP. And they'll return at next meeting with a recommendation for, and then we will start negotiations. There are two of them. They're labeled outside, but I'll open it. The first one is Emo Architects. I'm sure it's inside, it's an Emo Architect on the outside.
Mr. Emo.
And it's Emo Architect on the inside. It is from... Next one is from Barnet-Fronzak, and lots of old people. Barnzak, Bronzak, Barnet, Bronzak, Barlow and Shure.
You get a motion from the board, turn these over to the committee?
Stay moved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Massie, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Turn that over to the committee, and they'll come back next meeting with a recommendation.
That's it, anything else?
That's it.
Anything from the board for Mr. Eric this morning? There be no comments from the board, thanks for coming in today.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Next on the agenda will be public comment. Please raise your hand, come forward, state your name for the record. Any public comment?
Mr. Chairman, let me add, raise something on the public comment, just really more of a public issue. It's on my report, but I thought I'd do it now so make sure the newspaper gets it.
What's item number one you reported?
It's actually item number seven, it's about the causeway.
Okay.
Some of y'all may or may not recognize that there's some development, some work going on the causeway. Causeway is owned by the State of Florida, it's part of the US ninety-eight highway system, and when I first saw it, I thought, okay, they're building a bike path along the causeway. Because if you go out there now, right now, there's one section that's paved, it's about two-foot wide section of asphalt that goes from the Appalachia, you know, causeway from Appalachia to Long Bridge. Ultimately, you're gonna have that same asphalt from the other bridge to East Point, and then on the north side, and then embedded in that asphalt will be a guard rail. Now, that guard rail is eleven feet off the edge of the asphalt. I stopped and talked to the contractor, and I was like, man, this is a terrible idea. Why are you putting this up here? And of course, the contractor said, you know, I've bid on the job. But I, so I called DOT, and I got a call back from Carter Johnson this morning, and unfortunately, this is a product of a state law that was enacted this legislative session called Chloe's Law, and it was a requirement of the legislature that DOT install guard rails on any state highway that had a fatality between January two thousand and six and January of two thousand and sixteen. And in that ten-year period, there was an accident which caused someone to go into a body of water. DOT is by law now forced to put up guard rail. The accident, the fatality that prompted all this was down in South Florida, some woman ran off a causeway into a retention pond, but anyways, the same idea. And so DOT, by law, and had nothing to do with the five-year work plan, that's all, we didn't know any about it. It was an action of the DOT, by the legislature, forced DOT to spend this money. So we're gonna have a guard rail between Appalachia and East Point, eleven feet off the edge of the asphalt, which is gonna be a tremendous change in how people utilize that causeway, and I'm very concerned about it. And I told DOT that, because people drive along there to cast net, they drive along there to see the water. I mean, that causeway is about fifty feet wide, and there's plenty of room to move that, if they have to have a guard rail, move it back. And I asked them specifically this morning, can't you move it back? No, we can't, that's where it's gonna be. So I just tell you, the public, that this is a change that we didn't ask for, we didn't want, and DOT says it's a law, and they have to put it in.
I can tell you, it concerns me, because if you have a big truck have to pull off, and they'll be swinging their door open into the traffic, so, I mean, because those big rigs are between eight and nine feet wide, so.
Absolutely.
It's...
You're gonna have no room.
No, no room. And what's gonna happen is people are still gonna wanna park there, maybe they're gonna park and try and cast net, and now you're gonna have cars parked so close to the road, the DOT's gonna come back and put up no parking signs, and that's really gonna make people mad. I mean, I just think it's a... So I did all I could do this morning on behalf of you all, and Mr. Johnson said, I'm sorry, Alan, it's the state law, we are forced to do it by the legislature.
So what law is it called now?
It's called Chloe's Law.
Okay, Chloe's Law.
And that's the name after the woman who was killed sometime five or six years ago, somewhere in South Florida on a causeway, she went into a body of water. So this will be a, the asphalt is down, so when they do weed eating and maintenance of the causeway, they won't have to weed eat around all these posts, so that's why they put the asphalt down. And then the guard rail itself will not be a metal guard rail like you see at the end of a bridge abutment, but it'll be a cable guard rail. So it won't be, at least it won't, it won't be a visual issue as much as just a hindrance to getting around it over and all that kind of stuff, but it won't be any cut-throughs, it's gonna be all the way north and south. I just wanted to let the public know that, so that's why I brought it up.
Okay. Any public comment, one more time? There be no public comment, we'll move on with the agenda. Mr. John Saladin, Chamber of Commerce, proclamation.
Before y'all have a resolution and also a letter to the county commissioners from myself about National Volunteer Month again this year, last year, we actually started really gaining ground after eight years of going through this, and a lot of other entities within the county started recognizing the volunteers, giving awards to volunteers, getting more people involved, which encourages other people to volunteer, which is what the basis of it is, and I brought it back before y'all again today to hopefully y'all can sign another resolution, and encouraging people to volunteer, and thanking the volunteers that we do have in our community, because we surely have a lot of them. Also, spoke to Mr. Marone yesterday, have been in contact with Senator Motford's office. He is also going to be pushing a state proclamation through, thanking the volunteers of Franklin County in the next week or so.
Stay moved.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Massie, second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? As you said, John, we do have a lot of volunteer organizations here, from our volunteer fire department and first responders, and right on down the line, and they provide a very important service to the community. And as stated in the proclamation, how much money is saved by people volunteering, and they're especially important to a rural community, which has limited financial abilities to be able to take part in that, subsidize that. So anyway, I'm all for it, and I think the board is too, as evidenced by the motion and the second on the floor. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you all very much, I appreciate that.
Thank you for coming in today.
I got a copy to you. Commissioners, you see on your agenda next is Mr. Kirk Blair for TDC, but I would recommend that we do a flip, that you go ahead and hear from Opportunity Florida, because that might affect the discussion you have with Kirk Blair. So if the board doesn't mind, Opportunity Florida, they're here, the two gentlemen are here, and they're ready to be heard.
Any objections from the board? Next on the agenda will be Richard Williams and Antonio Jefferson, Opportunity Florida presentation. Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Yes, Ms. Chairman, Antonio Jefferson, Chairman of Opportunity Florida.
My name is Richard Williams, I'm the Executive Director for Opportunity Florida.
Mr. Chairman and board members, thank you for allowing us for a brief moment in your meeting to hear from our organization. As I said, I'm chairman of the organization, I've been chair for almost three years now. We are down here today to ask that you join, or rejoin Opportunity Florida. In understanding some of the brief history that Opportunity Florida has had with the county, first of all, let me apologize, right? Because I think that the service that we provided in years past didn't meet the expectation of Franklin County, and unfortunately, because the organization was trying to find ways to fund the organization, we got focused on other activities that wasn't at the core of our mission of helping and assisting our member communities with economic development. Opportunity Florida provides services to ten counties, and I'm including Franklin in that ten. We extend from North Walden County all the way over to Wacola County. My day job is City Manager of the City of Gretna over in Gadsden County, so I do understand the uniqueness of being from a small rural county. So I think that's critically important, and what I'd like to do, say to you here today, is that we need all of our member communities to be part of this organization, because only as a team are we stronger. And whether something happens in Franklin County, Wacola County, Gulf County, it's all important to all of us, but we all need to be part of the family to ensure that all of our interests are represented. Franklin County has, it's beautiful place, right? And there are opportunities out there for this community that help this community transition from what was a flourishing seafood industry to jobs that are a little more unique to Franklin County, one, and more importantly, one that opens up opportunities. I know that there's an airport here in the community, and it's a wonderful asset, and Gadsden County, as you're aware, is part of the freight logistics zone process, where we're trying to capitalize on the use of the Franklin, a county airport along with the port, along with the rail that extends from Gulf County up into Gadsden County. But the important thing there is all the communities working together, and that's what we hope Opportunity Florida will bring. Our Executive Director is here today to kinda take a little quick deep dive into what we believe that we have to offer the community, but I would say to you, and I said to your county administrator on yesterday, that our fee for membership is relatively low, it's ten cent per capita, but at the end of the day, if after the first year that you're not impressed with what we do, we'll give you your money back. We're not here to make the impression upon the county of fees more than we are to ensure that you're part of this organization. So some of the things that you're experiencing here in the community, whether it's legislatively, whether it's from the economic development standpoint, we wanna bring our services here to assist you and this community in figuring out where we go from here, what is Franklin County's future, right? And be part of that process, but not be the process, not tell you what to do, but be part of the process to help you and this community figure out where we go from here, and how in 2030 that Franklin County is even bigger and better and greater than what it is today. But I'll yield at this point for my Executive Director.
Thank you very much, and as our Chair said, apologies are in order. I came in, I was the original Executive Director, and I left, and sometime, and you were a member of the organization when I was there, sometime after I left, and a predecessor or somebody else came in, we lost our way. I just know other way to put it, the organization lost its way. And so what we're trying to do now, and what we are doing now, is we're going back to the basics, and the basics for us is about jobs. Everything that we do has to be targeted toward trying to bring additional employment into this region, and we wanna make sure that you're a part of that and a part of that effort. One of the things that we've got to do is we've got to get down here, and we've got to understand more about what your assets really are, and what type of restrictions you wanna have on those assets, what type of things we can go after and we can do. We need to work on both your existing businesses as well as bringing in new businesses to the area. There's opportunities here. All of our counties share something in common, in that all of our counties are losing labor force, all of our counties are, the employment's gone down since the recession. That's common in rural counties across Florida. We've got to stop that, we've got to give our kids a chance to stay here, and that's one of the things that we're trying to concentrate on, is, you know, from the labor side of the fence, how do we help improve that? How do we sell ourselves to those site consultants that are out there helping companies understand where they wanna go? How do we help local businesses that maybe wanna expand? Are there grant opportunities out there that we can help them go after? Not for us. So for example, the Florida Jobs Growth Grant that was out there, the eighty-five million dollars that the governor had available to him, we were providing technical assistance, which is a big part of what we do to multiple applications, we were able to get over five million dollars in the Opportunity Florida area in off of those grants. I'm not sure if Franklin put one of those applications in. We weren't asked to help with anything, and you haven't been a member, so I don't know if anybody would've contacted us. But that's the kind of thing that we do, and we did all of that, that's part of the dues, that's part of what we do. We don't come back and say, well, we're gonna help you with this job creation activity, but we need X amount more money from you. You know, if we can stay within the parameters of what we normally are there to do, and that is provide assistance to you. So really, what we need from you at this point is, we need you to commit to joining. We need to know who you would like to have on the board if you decide to do that, and we need a contact down here to work with, so that we can first off better understand who you are. And, you know, we've been, we've worked with the City of Carabel some on a building they've got over there. We need to know more about the airport, we need to work on that, I think that's a huge... We don't have another asset like that in our region, and we need that, we need to make better use of that. With that being said, you know, I understand there's probably gonna be questions, and I'll be glad to answer any questions, and I know our Chair would as well, but if there's questions there, I'd be glad to take them.
Any comments from the board?
Yeah. We did a problem with Opportunity Florida, we joined it, and we never had no success in getting nothing done. But the way y'all talking now, if it's real, it seem like it's getting better. I mean, it'll be better for us. But you know, we didn't never look for the big home run, but it was something out there, and they didn't do it that. You know, we know they weren't gonna come in here and give us no big major job. It was something they could've did, but they didn't do nothing the whole time. I've been in sixteen, going on fourteen years, Commissioner Sanders, she was here ahead of me, and I mean, they... They didn't put one, not one job in Franklin County, and I didn't see where we were benefiting from. And we asked about it, and there was always, there didn't, there nothing ever happened. I'm willing to try if, I speak for myself, there's four more Commissioners up here, but I'm willing to try if y'all mean what you said, so we'll do it. Like I said, we'll take the overflow. I mean, it's something out there that y'all can send us to overflow, we'll take that. Two jobs better than none.
Is that in form of a motion, Commissioner Lockley?
Yeah.
Before we make a motion, I just got some comments, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Fernandez and Mr. Williams, thank you for coming before the board, whoever. I think I'm right on the names, ain't I? Jefferson, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Jefferson. You're Mr. Jefferson from Gretna?
Yes, ma'am.
You're a good friend, Ms. Dolores Madison out of Midway, and also Ms. Brenda Hold out of Quincy, Gadsden County. Very good friends of ours, the boards. Our reason for leaving the Opportunity Florida was because of the former Executive Director, and you all know who I'm talking about. We were promised certain things by signing MOUs, MOAs, and everything else, we never got them. And you are right, we do have a jewel in this county, all the counties are jewel, but our jewel is that airport out there. From the very get-go, we tried to get Opportunity Florida to help us out with it. They never did. He said, oh, we can put a link on our website, and somebody can click into it if they wanna do something. Well, we were looking at them to do something, and that's the reason why this board left Opportunity Florida, was because we were not getting any benefits from it. Our jobs was going, family dollar store distribution people, you know, they got all the jobs. We didn't get no spin-off from it. When Georgia Pacific came, we do have a few people, a couple people, I think a couple people right now, that's hired by the Georgia Pacific place up in above Horsford. But we don't mind joining anything, but we wanna see results from it. And that's exactly, we don't have no I-10s, we don't have no big major highways except for ninety-eight. You got sixty-five and sixty-seven, but that's so far out, you know, there. But I'm agreeing like Mr. Lockley is agreeing, that, you know, maybe we need to look at it, maybe. How did y'all perceive helping Franklin County? Were y'all gonna be the catalyst that will see something coming in and say, hey, you know, that might be good for Franklin County? Pick up the phone and call somebody, whoever we appoint or whatever?
Yeah, we wanna work with, we wanna work with you locally, and that's the way we do it in the other counties. So, you know, we're doing everything from gathering leads from places like Enterprise Florida to actually send in somebody out. We had somebody out this last year, went out to Atlanta, to Chicago, to Dallas, to talk with different site consultants, that not just the ones that work the great big home run projects, but also some of those that work smaller projects, because that's more in line with what we're gonna end up getting down here. We wanna come down and understand more about the airport. One of the things is, I understand you've had a lot of studies done down here, things, people telling you what you need to do. We're about action. I don't want those studies, I'm not gonna come down here and tell you we need to do another study. What we need to do is look at what's already been done, what you've already spent money on, and let's see if we can't figure out how to put that into action. How do we get the resources that you need to do that? What opportunities are out there to make that happen? We also, though, we have to have that local contact, because we've gotta know, you know, we've gotta have somebody here that helps us better understand what you really want to have happen in this county. And this is not about what we wanna do, what we wanna bring to you, but it's what you need us to do for you. And that's very much the way we operate, you know? I'm not sitting here telling you that I wanna bring in something that you don't want, because it's not gonna work. You know, that's why we also talk about helping existing businesses, there are ways to do that. When I was here before, back before the state did away with Enterprises' own program, we helped set one of those up here in hopes of using that, and that gave some tax advantages to some of the businesses. We're looking for those kind of opportunities to bring in. Opportunity zones, we've already been in contact with folks in Tallahassee, trying to make sure that our rural counties, and we did include your county in this already, but we wanna make sure that all those opportunity zones that we're eligible for automatically that we get. And I can't promise you that's gonna happen, but I can tell you we're over there, you know, we're pushing it now, because that's something that's important, is that can make a difference in a county like Franklin. You know, we need to use all the tools that we've got in the box, and we need to keep adding more tools to it. And the best way to do that is everybody working together. This is the one place, and I hate to go to Tallahassee and talk with somebody, and they ask about the zone in the counties, and I have to, right now, I always have to say, well, we've got, all of them are members except, and...
It don't sound good to them.
It does not. It does not, and I think it does hurt, I think it hurts not only you here, but I think it hurts the rest of the counties around, because it makes it appear as if we're not working together, and that's the key. It's like the freight... It's like the freight logistics zone, we have to work together. That's something I think has got to be key going forward.
Well, and I can say that y'all were the first ones to come before us since the former executive director. And although my days are numbered on the board, because I'll be going out in November. I chose not to run again, I'm going to retire. You know, this is something good, and the county commission, they all have jobs. They all have other things that they have to do, and so it would be good to have somebody that would help us point these things out. Now, I will give you fair warning. If you do not do what you are supposed to do, I'm quite sure that this board will keep you in check.
We expect nothing less.
Any other comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman, before we, Alan, is this the same opportunity zone thing that I talked about?
Yeah, so in my report, Richard Antonio, I had, just to let you know that, I didn't watch you all, I know we're part of, I know we were in your service area, but Commissioner Jones had asked me to look into something, it's item number eight of my report. So Franklin County is on its own applied for the qualified opportunity zone, and I got a confirmation from, actually, Greg Dodge from D E O saying that they had forwarded our application to the governor's office. So we're, I didn't know you'd done it for us, William Altor already done it also. And I, just to let you know, I talked to him yesterday, and they have many more applications than that can be awarded. So we will be a little bit of a competition, and then we just have to wait and see how it shakes out.
Yeah, and we're trying to advocate for those rural counties, because what we don't want to see happens, we don't want to see us get left out and all those zones go down to South Florida. We need those zones in rural areas.
And this program is actually taxing centers from the federal government, not from Franklin County or state government, from the federal government to help generate jobs in these rural communities and in these opportunity zones.
And just to do the math for yours, so the ten cents per capita comes out, and I forget how many people we have in the county, but say it's twelve thousand, so that's twelve hundred dollars a year, as you're doing with your dues.
But that never was the issue, the money was never the issue. The money was never the issue.
Any other, uh, public, I mean, any other board comments? There being no further comments, Mr. Lockley, you did make a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion, we rejoin and try it again.
Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Jones, any further discussion?
I would like to say something, please, Mr. Chairman. You know, I thought about this over the weekend as I was looking at the agenda and knowing, I mean, I just met Mr. Williams the other day at an A R P C meeting. You know, I don't know if there's anything that can be done. Well, number one, I have a question, since we're talking about joining, is there, is there going to be anybody from your organization that's going to be taking part in the Centerton Nelson and Rubio Grant Education Forum in Quincy in April? Want to be thinking about that?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll be there, and there'll be members from the Opportunity Florida.
If we become a member, is that something we need to send somebody to as well, or will we kind of be able to do it from you guys?
It's entirely up to you, Commissioner, and let me, one of the follow-up and the angle you're going. I do agree with Commissioner Sanders, hold us accountable. If we need to come before this board and explain something we're doing, done, what have you, if the administrator feels like the board needs an update, we will be here when you ask us to be here. Not two months, not three months, but the night that you ask us, you know, give us a little more warning than the night before. But even if you do that, we can accommodate that, but we want you to hold us accountable. And we go to these things representing the county, and we'll ensure that we pass the information off to your administrator or to, if you establish someone to do economic development and work with us directly, we'll make sure we get that information to them.
And I got...
I was just going to tell you, that's something that Nelson Rubio put together. It's a grant education forum, and it's about economic opportunities.
And the upcoming meeting at the A R P C about these rural airports and the overlay that they're trying to shove down our throat, will somebody be attending that on behalf of Opportunity Florida to let us know how it's going to affect these rural counties?
Yes, sir, you're not the only county that has that issue, so yes, sir, that is something that we want to make sure of. We've got a large number of small airports all across our area, and we want to make sure that we're protecting the municipalities that have them, the counties that have them, as well as the airport itself, because those are valuable assets for us.
I mean, I can understand some of the airport overlay, if you were going out to build a new airport, but these airports are already established and people are encroached upon them. Some of them have been dormant for a number of years. So it's a little different for a rural county with an established airport than it is to apply this overlay to a new airport that you're doing. And those are the differences that need to be distinguished. I know we're sending several people along with our attorney up to that particular meeting, and it'd be good to have Opportunity Florida there advocating for these rural communities.
Yes, sir.
We do have, you got another comment?
I had one more thing I would ask, trying to remember now. Oh, I don't know that it's something that might be overstepping both of our bounds, but I would like to push an idea that Ms. Brenda brought up at the last A R P C meeting. I really think the state should come up with some kind of clearinghouse for companies. It might not work for Liberty, but, you know, Franklin might be more suited, you know what I mean? So people aren't really falling in the cracks, because as it is now, they're having to make contact with, you know, say they made contact with Franklin, well, it doesn't work out here. They're going to have to make contact with each county, you know. I don't know if it's something Opportunity Florida can help with, but I just wanted to bring it up.
Yeah, so one of the first things that we'll do is we want to come down here and determine what kind of assets you've got. We've already done a desk review of properties, trying to look and see if there, you know, might be properties that would be good to look at for some, certain types of companies, and we want to look and know what those are. But we also need to come down here, and we need to get, you know, information on the buildings, we need to get more information on the airport. We, we're not waiting on the state. We've got a database already that we've set up so that, you know, when we're working with somebody, they can come in and they can look at that database to see what's out here in all of our counties. Because our goal is to open it up as broad as possible, and you can't catch fish if you don't have the hook in the water. We want to put your hook in the water.
That I didn't know, I'm glad I asked.
We got a big industrial park out there with nothing on it, so we'll take a look at that.
Yeah, Commissioner Jones, just to follow up with it. So there's another entity out there, the State of Florida, and I apologize about, because I don't really know how it's funded, is Enterprise Florida. And Enterprise Florida does in fact have this sort of clearinghouse effect that you're talking about. Periodically, as I say, it's not on a regular basis, I, because I, right now, I'm the contact economic developer, and I hope it's going to be somebody else in just another motion, is that we'll get a, I'll get a list, a request from E F I saying, you know, this company, and it's always an unknown company, because their, their E F I is acting as a clearinghouse on behalf of all our small county, or maybe all the counties in the state of Florida. And so it'll give me a description of what the, what the company's looking for. And every time we get knocked out from one of the basic requirements, either they want a hundred thousand square foot building, for which we don't have, the largest building we have, sixty thousand square foot, the Green Steel Building in Carrabelle, but sometimes it's a hundred thousand square feet. But the other criteria that always catches us is they want access either to an interstate or a four-lane highway. They want to be within ten minutes of an interstate or a four-lane highway, and we don't have that. And they, and they're very clear that if you don't meet the basic requirements, do not apply. And that's been our, that's why I posed this question to them, or this concept to them yesterday, that maybe, since we're never going to, I don't know when we're going to get a four-lane highway close enough to us to qualify for that kind of stuff, but we have these airports. We have an airport, Bob Sykes Cut, not Bob Sykes Cut, Bob Sykes Airport in Oaklusso County is similar to Franklin County's airport. It's a large military, ex-military airport that is underutilized. So maybe we can develop a satellite airport system, like we have a satellite road system. Maybe we have these other airports, and there may be others in the Opportunity Florida area that can serve some other use besides commercial traffic, and we could develop this other tier of airports that are already built but just underutilized, and somehow provide services across the whole panhandle by these other airports. So that's, that's our transportation network we need to focus on. Because every time I see an E F I proposal, we always fail on either the size of the building, they want existing, they don't want to build a building, they want an existing building, or they want access on a four-lane highway.
And another thing we have is that Bay City War Camp out there.
Yes, we talked to them about that yesterday.
We have the Bay City War Camp, that could bring in something there, so, anyway.
We do have a motion, let's take it on the floor. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Welcome aboard, Chairman.
Oh, so they want, you want a contact person? Does that, does that have to be an elected official or going to be a staff person?
It can be anybody the county wants to do it.
I make a motion, I make a motion that we have Commissioner Jones represent us as contact person for E D C.
We have a motion for a floor back...
You want, I don't know probably to go to the...
Yeah, that he represents us.
But you want a staff person for eight hours, I mean, five days, like to do the research?
Talking about, you're going to have to have a representative go to Opportunity Florida.
So you want a board member? That would be the board member.
And that's what I'm talking about, I want Mr. Jones to represent us.
To be like a board member.
And anything to do with Opportunity Florida goes through the staff here and Mr. Jones, okay?
Would you like, you guys consider appointing, I messed up her married name, Barfield. Whitney Barfield as the E D C staff member, contact person, Whitney.
Oh, Whitney.
I mean, she does grant, she does grant management, she works with Alan Lott, her restore, she kind of is well-rounded in this field, and you'll just...
I think it's an excellent idea.
Okay.
Well, well...
I made a motion, Mr. Noah.
Well, motion...
So we can put both under your motion, the board member and the staff member?
The staff person would be Whitney, and the board member would be Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Jones don't have no say in this.
That's apparent already.
So we have a motion for a floor back, Commissioner Sanders, second back of Mr. Lockman. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
And you'll send it to the board, chairman?
Yes.
Next on the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, may I take one of my items out of order? We have a, Mr. Jason Schofus here in the audience.
Okay.
And otherwise, he'll be waiting here for probably eleven-thirty or twelve, if I may proceed, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. All right, item number one on my report, propane gas tanks. The installation of propane gas tanks in the coastal high hazard area at grade, which means ground level, has been raised by persons in the propane industry as well as the construction industry. Presently, your code requires that propane tanks in the coastal high hazard area be installed either at the heights required for construction of a structure, means it is fourteen feet above grade, tank has to be at fourteen feet above grade, or it would have to be buried and anchored underground. Those are the two options under your current ordinance. The issue is that persons in the industry want to install the propane gas tanks on top of the ground in the coastal high hazard area, not underground and not above the ground at elevation. My request is board approval for me to investigate this matter and provide a recommended course of action. And the specific issue is people in the industry are explaining to me that there is an exception which would allow the propane gas tanks to be installed at ground level in the coastal high hazard area. I just need to examine that issue, and I want your permission to do so.
Just a comment, and then I'll make a motion. We've had this issue come up in the St. Teresa area on a new house that's been built, and it was about propane tanks, Mr. Smith. So, yeah, you remember? And so, I mean, we need to have clarification on that, and I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we ask the attorney to go out and investigate this and bring back a good course of action for the board to take.
We have a motion for a floor by Commissioner Sanders.
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Jones, any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I definitely feel like we need to do something to find a way to approach this, because there's a problem. You can't make everybody use, that doesn't want to use propane gas for their heating. I mean, they're tired of using, we can't single out the industry, but at the same time, burying them definitely is not a good idea. So I would really like to see what you find out, Forrest Attorney.
Yes, sir, I've been working with representatives from the industry, including the Florida Propane Gas Tank Industry or Association, I think it's actually called. So I'm working with them in conjunction with your planning staff and your floodplain manager. We'll get this worked out, and I'll bring back a recommended course of action for the board.
Thank you.
We do have a motion, do we have a second?
We do.
We do have a second. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Next on the...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Move down the agenda. We got to go back up the agenda, should I say. Mr. Kirk Blair, T D C discussing, please come forward, state your name for the record.
First of all, I want to apologize for not being here at your last meeting when I would normally give my report. We had some family issues that I chose to take care of in March, so I had Deb phone come and give you my regular report. As you know, the T D C board has made a decision to move ahead with going out for qualifications for all of our vendor contracts. It's been a number of years since those contracts have been open for competition, if you will, and in the, with an eye towards transparency and constantly looking for new resources. The board decided that this would be a good year to do that. They're in the process of putting together the process for advertising, and we'll be talking about that at our meeting next week. Attorney Schuler and I have been working on the details of that, and I wanted to come in and just make sure we're all on the same page in light, I guess, of some discussion that occurred at your last meeting and your preference. Currently, our contracts, the five vendor contracts are done through contracts with organizations, companies, to provide the host of services that our vendors provide, which includes web services, print and production, writing services, TV, radio, and administration. We would most likely move ahead and use the opportunity to solicit qualifications for people with those models in mind. That is to say, we would contract, propose recommendations for contracting for those services. But I think Commissioner Lockley raised an issue at the last meeting that we just, Mr. Schuler and I thought we probably ought to make sure we got clarification on. Is that your desire? There had been some discussion about bringing administration in-house at one point, and if that is the commission's desire, that'll probably change a little bit about how we go about advertising. So we decided it'd be best to come before you today and get clarification on that issue. Is that pretty much what we agree?
Yes, sir, that's, there are some other items I have to go over with the board, one of which I think we probably have dealt with potentially this morning concerning possibly combining T D C and E D C functions together. But one of the main issues is, does the board want to see the administration contract become an in-house or an out-house position with the county commission? And this is more of a discussion for the board to give us some of your thoughts on how you would like to see us proceed, because it will affect structurally how I put together the R F Q that's going to be advertised. The R F Q is now complete, it includes a draft of the contract and the contract standards and some boilerplate language and things of that nature. But when I get to the section that involves, you know, potential salaries, I can't really draft that language until I know whether it's going to remain an independent contract position, which is what I'm referring to, an out-house position, or if the board would like to see this brought as an in-house position as a county employee, which would entail, you know, benefits and retirement and things of that nature. So that's the reason I want to bring this back to the board today, so I could just have some clarification and direction from the board on how you would like to see this proceed. Because although we have time, this is the first of April, these contracts don't have to be in place until September the thirtieth of this year, but for me to draft this and get it to the T D C and for them to look at it and make any recommendations that they would like to see made in terms of changes, and then bring it back to the board at your meeting, possibly in May to get some final direction, and then get it advertised, and then go through the qualification process and perhaps even the interview process, and then come back to the board. I mean, you're, we could be at this point looking at, you know, July or August. So that is the reason for coming back to you now, to get some direction on a number of issues. But the first one is whether this position should be an in-house position or remain as an independent contractor.
I think my question was last week, when I made the motion, I asked y'all to find out the difference, how much it was going to cost for in-house, and how much it cost. I wanted to know the difference for information purpose.
Yes, sir.
And that was, how much would it cost if we bring it in-house? That was, I'm searching for information, that's what I'm looking for.
Yes, we have someone working on a pro forma potential budget for an in-house. That pro forma budget is not complete at this time.
Well, until we get that, I don't see where we can move, no way. That's what I was asking, I was asking what it cost if we bring it in-house. I know what it costs now. I know what it cost now, with what they make it now. But I'm comparing. And then we make our, then we go from there. That's what I want to find out.
Yes, sir. Well, in, in the report that I've prepared for the board, I did have some, even though I, I don't yet have a pro forma budget, I have made some recommendations for the board to consider, which would be, if, if you wanted to make this an in-house position, I have compared this as, as you pay your other department heads. Uh, the other department heads, I, I don't have the exact numbers, but for purposes of discussion, possibly fifty thousand dollars a year annually, uh, in salary plus their, uh, retirement and their benefits, which probably adds, what, another twelve to fifteen percent? So you probably have another twelve thousand, fifteen thousand dollars worth of benefits that would go to that, that person. So potentially, uh, total cost around sixty-five thousand dollars for an in-house as a department head. Uh, that does not include the current staff members that are being used at the TDC. Uh, one of the suggestions that I've made to you is perhaps, uh, look at using the budget for the East Point Visitor Center to fund those, uh, two or three positions that they have and then have those individuals remain at, or, or turn them into leased employees as you do with some other, your, uh, county departments, that they're leased employees. They're, they're not actually county employees with benefits. What that would cost right now, you're paying about forty thousand dollars for your, your, uh, TDC Visitor Center. Whether those three positions could be funded out of that as well as the operations of the TDC, uh, Visitor Center. At East Point, it may require a little extra funding for that particular visitor center, uh, potentially. So you may be looking, uh, not, not necessarily at, uh, tremendous net savings, but you could potentially save, but I think your TDC admin budget now is what, a hundred and, tell me, it was a hundred and five, a hundred and ten?
It's, you know, we base it on the nine percent of the gross revenues from the previous year. So it's about a hundred, you know, it varies.
So that there are some potential savings, uh, you know, maybe, these are just my numbers for, for discussion. Maybe, you know, thirty-five or forty thousand dollars a year if you were to bring it potentially in-house. And if you could fund those three positions that are presently being paid for out of a combination of your Visitor Center money and your admin budget, if, if you could consolidate that into your TDC budget. But Commissioner Lockley, your point is well taken. We do not yet have the pro forma budget prepared to present to the board. But...
What they doing, they paying them, they getting paid now that, uh, they combining some. I mean, we, we not paying them out of no, I, I belong to.
No, no, ad board, no. So they get, uh...
They getting...
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry.
I, I had, Mr. Chairman, I have to agree with Mr. Lockley, uh, Commissioner Lockley. Um, I think before we can move ahead on anything to decide in-house, out-of-house or whatever, we do need to have budgets on it to see what the comparison is. Because right now, you're doing it, the administrative part of it, and all the employees that, that is there is underneath that administrative part of it for eighty thousand, a hundred thousand, whatever. And, you know, when you, you do it out of house, or in-house and bring it in, then you're gonna have a lot, lot of expenses there. So until we get a comparison to see what we're looking at, I'm, I'm, I'm like Mr. Lockley. I don't see how we can move forward until we get that information.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh, you know, I've, I've thought a lot about this since the last meeting when we talked about it. And had, I've had some people ask me about it, and I'm sure you guys have too. This board is just trying to do the same due diligence and transparency that we're asking the TDC to do. That's all we're doing. We're trying to make sure we're looking at everything, looking at every angle, trying to make sure we're doing it the best way possible for everybody involved. That's all we're doing. It's not about trying to, you know, it's not about, uh, individuals or people. You know what I mean? It's not, it's none of that. I, I've been asked all those questions. That's all I'm gonna bring it up. Well, you know, it's just about doing due diligence and us going forward the best way to go forward. And we can't know till we get that thing.
And another reason I asked, would, when we renewed Mr. Blair's contract, he said, he standing right where he was now and said, uh, he wanted two more years to complete some obligation. But when he said that, I'm thinking he not gonna be here no way. I don't know whether he changed his mind or what. But I'm still looking to see what is the best way. I don't know what'll be good, one, one of the other. But we need to know these things. You pull the search around and look for other, other options. We've been hollering about bringing it in-house for a while. And now we can find out the difference, see what it costs. Or either we leave it out there like it is. But we still need to know it, and things like that need to be known.
And Mr. Massey?
We need to know both sides of it, I feel, in-house and outside.
And Mr. Blair can correct me if, if my numbers are too far off the mark. But in terms of the total amount of money that you have for admin and the operations of the East Point Visitor Center, because they, they do blend those two budgets together for, for staffing purposes. It was a hundred thousand dollars for admin. There's basically forty thousand dollars that goes to the visitor center. And then, uh, the board allowed them to, to utilize some of the advertising money as opposed to taking that money out of administrative purposes, like for mail, mailouts and things that were publicity related. So it's, it's, and I think that has a cap of about seventeen, eighteen thousand dollars annually. So potentially, you're looking at, when you put all the pots of money together, maybe about a hundred and fifty thousand, a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars a year for admin and the visitor center operations over there. So we'll look at those numbers and see what we can bring back in terms of if it's in-house.
And why is you doing it? Let me ask you another, what did the legislative come up with on the TDC board? They were talking one time about the salary?
There was a lot of discussion, but it never made it into the final version of the legislation, is my understanding. Uh, but there was certainly a lot of talk about capping administrative salaries. Uh, it could be no higher than your highest paid, uh, county administrator, basically. So it, it, it would have been a substantial difference in the amount paid for administrative that legislation had gone through.
And, and you know, I'm not gonna start on range, boy. If we bring it in-house, it's gonna be within the same range that the other people get.
Oh, it has to be, absolutely.
I mean, you know, I'm not gonna come out here and have this, bring somebody in here making a hundred thousand dollars and he does, he's been working fifty, thirty-five, forty years and they didn't top that. So it's gonna be on that level if, if we do bring it in. But my vote, I'll put it that way.
But Jim, were you planning on retiring or, or what was your, what was you gonna do? Because I'm like Mr. Noah, two years ago, you, you know, you said you wanted only two more years. What's, what are you gonna do?
Yeah, Commissioner, I think it's about time we talked about that. You know, I'm not gonna put a gun to anybody's head and say I'm leaving tomorrow. Certainly, I intended that, you know, by this point in my life, I'd be going into retirement. Uh, you know, there are a number of things that are hanging out there. Uh, you know, the sooner we get all of this resolved, the sooner they get resolved. Uh, I'm, you know, I don't have to leave at September thirtieth, but I, I would like to get some guidance, especially moving along in terms of identifying, you know, both how you wanna do it and the successor that, that you would, uh, you would have replace me. Uh, you know, I think we ought to move in that direction. It's time. Don't get me wrong, I've enjoyed all of this. I mean, this has been a great experience and I think we've done a lot of great stuff, largely because of the boards that you've given me to work with and, and the help of the commission that I'm getting on an age and, you know, uh, it may be time to start looking for a replacement.
I, I got one comment or a couple of comments on this particular issue. I've let the other commissioners have their say, so. Uh, as it relates to, uh, looking for qualifications for the different vendors, I have nothing against any of the current vendors that we have. To me, it's like Commissioner Jones says, it's just all a matter of transparency. I have no, uh... And I've said this many times, we may end up with the same vendors and that's fine. But from the point of transparency, people in the community have an opportunity. Some of these vendors, I don't think anybody can compete with them. But the opportunity is afforded. Uh, and as it relates to Mr. Blair and, and his two-year con, comment that's been referred to by a couple of different commissioners, you know, we as a board can't discriminate. If Mr. Blair wants to put in a proposal to continue doing this, then he should have that opportunity. As well as, we all know, there are other people that wanna put in a proposal too, and they should have an opportunity. So it's all about transparency. Uh, I don't have a problem with, with however it goes. When it comes to in-house and out-house, out-house is a strange word. That gets me every time, but anyway. You know, there are a lot of different perspectives on that. Uh, I like the TDC board as it currently operates because I like to give the TDC board the ability to operate without the thumb of the county commissioner on top of. The final decision rests here with this board anyway. Anything TDC does has to be brought back to this board to be ratified. But, you know, and that's just another perspective, bringing it in-house makes him a county employee. Uh, and it looks like to me that the county's putting their thumb on the TDC board. Now they're working as a county employee and it looks more like they're working for the board rather than for the community. So that's just another perspective. Uh, I understand that we can't do anything till we get the numbers and, and at that point, it will be brought back to this board for a vote up or down or how we wanna do it. That's just another, I'm just offering a different perspective. Just like the hospital board, I don't go to hospital board meetings. I let the hospital board operate as they should. I don't go to the planning zone meetings. I let the planning zone board operate as they should. All these different boards bring recommendations back to this big board for the final decision. So the final decision rests with this board, no doubt about it. But I just don't like the sound of bringing them in-house and, and putting the thumb on a particular committee and, and the people on the committee are volunteers. I mean, if decisions are all gonna be made by this board, why do you need a TDC committee? So this is just different perspectives I'm throwing out there. And there'll be no action taken until we, uh, get some stuff back from Mr. Shuler, some of the comments that different commissioners have made and the information that they want. And then we'll make a decision. Is there any other clarification you need this morning, Mr. Blair?
Well, as far as I'm concerned, no. I, I mean, I, I would ask if, if you had anything that you wanted the TDC board or myself to prepare to help you make that decision. I mean, we'd be glad to do that.
I wanna... I'll tell you what I would like to see and I'm gonna put it in a motion. While y'all doing all this searching on the TDC, how about, I'm gonna make a motion that you, uh, add what it cost the EDC to go to it too. Cause some kind of take the EDC and the TDC together. So, uh, bringing the information, while we getting the information, I like to get it, let's get it all.
Let, let me ask you, just, just wanna clarify something. So what we did, Commissioner, we just, uh, appointed, um, our staff member to now be the contact to EDC. So would this be in addition to the staff member we had?
Yeah, from what we were talking about the last time. No. I still wanna know...
Just what it would cost. You're just trying to find a number.
Yeah.
Oh, the number.
I added, yeah.
So, but we're not rescinding what we did earlier about Whitney, okay?
No, no.
I like what we just did with Whitney and having Commissioner Jones as the EDC point person or, or the one that would go to the meetings and all. Again, I don't like the TDC and the EDC combination. I'm sorry, that's just me. That's not the board. I don't like that, number one, because EDC is promotion and trying to bring visitors here. And they're, if, if they're not going to be brought in-house as a county employee, then I don't want somebody that's not a county employee out there doing our EDC work. Because a county employee is accountable to this board.
That's true.
So that, that's, to me, that's a difference. But we can look at it.
Mr. Chairman...
I had a problem looking at it, but...
Can I express my views on that? I agree with you. I don't think the TDC and the EDC needs to be together. I think it has opposite, um...
Goals.
Goals. And, I mean, that's the way I feel. But I'm like you, I'm willing to look. But I, I, I don't think the TDC and EDC need to be mixed.
I think with the current thing that we just done previously, along with the Opportunity Florida that we just hired, working together, that person in the county office over here will get the information out to our, our, uh, board members a lot quicker. And, and we'll be more informed having a county employee that answers to this board.
Yeah, but that's a different thing. We just, uh, EDC and that Opportunity Florida is two different things. EDC work for Franklin. Opportunity Florida work for the whole, the whole region. So that's two different, I ain't no need trying to put it on my way. That's two different things you just did. EDC is different than, uh, Opportunity Florida.
Mr. Chairman?
EDC supposed to be, both of them look for jobs. Yeah. But one of, they're different. They're one of them a regional approach and the EDC is a local approach.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, following up on, uh, Commissioner Lockley's question from the last meeting that, that the board directed me to look into, uh, Mr. Merrill and I have discussed among staff the possibility of, of potentially combining TDC and EDC functions together. You've noticed in my report, that was one of the points of discussion that I wanted to have with the board this morning. But in addition to that, I did post on the County Attorneys Forum webpage a question concerning, uh, any other counties that have combined the TDC and the EDC functions together. I got one reply back from Seminole County, uh, a, a young lady by the name of Tricia, who can't remember her last name at this particular point in time. But Tricia called me last week. Seminole County at one point had a separate TDC and a separate EDC, uh, department. They, they merged those two departments together a few years back for reasons that were internal and perhaps, uh, possibly even political to Seminole County. Uh, Tricia was brought in as an outside person to manage those two departments. Uh, she tells me when she goes to conferences, she routinely hears the, 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 the following comments. Why did you combine those two together? They don't seem similar. Um, so that is something that I'm hearing from some of the commissioners today. Commissioner Lockley, we will get your, your question answered. I have asked Tricia to send me their budget and their job descriptions that they have in Seminole County. She has not delivered that information to me yet, but we will get your question answered, sir. But I did wanna have that discussion with the board, how, how the board felt about potentially merging those two departments together. So unless the board has any further comments, I will just take what I've heard here this morning and, and run with it.
Mr. Chairman, I got one more comment before we leave this subject, since we've, we've talked about a range of things here. Uh, in thinking about the, uh, it being a volunteer continuing to be a, a county position or continuing the way it is, and I would know if I were sitting on that volunteer board, I, I would not like it if it seemed like it wasn't a real need for me to be there. You know, like if it was a county employee and it's, you know, like, like, like you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, with the county putting their thumb on them, so to speak. Uh, you, after a while, as a volunteer, you wouldn't feel like your input was needed or even thought of. It could go that way very easily. I just wanna mention it while we're, while we're having those discussions this morning.
Any clarification you need, Mr. Blair?
I'm fine, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
But, yes, Chairman, I do have one other issue on my report. And it's, just wanted to bring to the board's attention that the issue of the length of contracts for the, the TDC administrator. This, the answer to this question will also apply to the vendor, uh, contracts and the vendor RFQs that I'm preparing. Presently, the board, uh, is allowing a two-year time period uh, because as you mentioned here today, Mr. Blair had a one-year contract, y'all added two years to that. So, I mean, effectively, he had this one period for a three-year contract. But what I'm reading into this is the board is still moving on this track of having two-year contracts. Unless I hear a, a, a different, uh, point of view or direction from the board, when I draft these RFQs for the admin position and the, the vendors, they will be for two-year contracts. All right, thank you.
I thought, I thought it was one year at first.
They ha, they had been one-year contracts, Commissioner. Uh, but as, as y'all have, uh, discussed here this morning, uh, about two years ago, Mr. Blair came back and asked to get a two-year extension on his admin contract.
He asked to add a year to that year.
And, and, but then the board, the big board, the county commission, came back and extended the vendor contracts in a similar fashion so that they were, they went from having one-year contracts to two-year contracts, is my, my recollection. But that's why I'm bringing it up for board discussion because my understanding of, of what the board has decided is that these vendor contracts would be two- the board has decided is that these vendor contracts would be two-year contracts, and the admin contract was also a two-year contract. Now, whether that was a one-time deal or moving forward is the purpose of having this discussion, but unless I get different direction, I was going to move towards having two-year vendor contracts for your consideration.
And that includes administrative?
That would include the administration, yes.
I like that because it gives, if you had changes, change of vendors, or if you had change in administration, it gives them two years to actually work, to try to make improvements. In one year, it's hard to do that. I think a two-year term is fine to be able to accomplish that. And then you go back and you look at whether these contracts should be renewed or request qualifications again or what have you. That's just my opinion.
Correct. And I would typically build into these contracts, as I do in your other contracts, a six-month termination provision of the board, if there was a need to get out, then you would have a six-month period where you could try and re-advertise and bring someone else in. Unless I get here differently from the board, I would all, I would build in that right of termination, both for the county and for the vendor.
Any comments from the board, man? On that issue?
I'm good with that.
All right, thank you, Commissioners.
We had a motion on floor by Commissioner Lockley.
We did. I think that's the same motion that the board had already directed me at the last meeting to look into and report back on these potential economic development issues. So, certainly however the board wants to act this morning, that's, at the board's discretion. But I feel like I already have direction from the board to bring back that information. I've already begun gathering that information. As I'd mentioned, my conversation with Seminole County.
You need to motion on, do the two-year contracts?
No, sir.
Okay.
I think the board is already acting on that a couple of years ago. I just wanted to make sure that was still the board's intent moving forward. That was the purpose of the discussion.
You rescinding your...
Yeah.
...motion, Commissioner Lockley, and that attorney move forward?
Yes, sir.
Let the record reflect, Mr. Lockley rescinded this motion, and I think the attorney has direction he needs. Anything else, Mr. Blair?
That's it, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in today. Board recessed five minutes.